That all of our thoughts actually reflect the holy will and will grant us the grace to make the better decision for our city. And it also infects that we see the proper treatment and comfort of your healing presence. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Back for pledge of allegiance?
Back of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the infinite and just for all.
Now, any public comments at this time? Go ahead, Mr. Arjona.
Yes, sir. Mayor Commissioners, staff, good evening. The first item on the agenda, we have presentations. Tonight, we have a presentation on departmental reports. We have Department of Finance, Department of Utilities, Police Department, Fire Department, and Municipal Court. Everybody should be on their computers. Should you have any questions for them under their reports, Mayor Commissioners?
Any questions for the directors at this time?
Yes, at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and ask Chief, Diso Garza, can you hear me, sir?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Uh, Chief.
Yes, sir, Mayor.
And Chief, in reference to, uh, I know that you guys were, uh, starting to make some sandbags. How many total sandbags did you guys prepare for this coming round?
We, we got, uh, we bagged 2,000 bags that we have readily available, Mayor.
For, for this weekend's, uh, I know we're supposed to get some little bit of rain, but I know these tropical storms went up towards the Houston, Louisiana area. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. So you said about 2,000 sandbags?
That's correct. If we, if we see that we'll need some more or anything, we can possibly, that's pretty much having the trailer full and the little storage shed also. So, uh, as far as, uh, having room for them, we can probably squeeze in a little bit of, a couple of more pallets, but we're good, uh, we're good to go with 2,000 bags.
Okay. The only thing I ask is here in the near future, that we also have a distributing site over here on the south side of town, uh, maybe at Mayfield as well?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. We'll do it. We'll get it done.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the directors? If not, we'll go ahead and move on. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, Mayor. Uh, the next item, public hearings. We have a hold of public hearing for a rezoning request from the neighborhood commercial district. C1 to single-family residence district of a .36 acre tract of land out of lot nine, block 35, Alamo Land and Shure Company subdivision located at southeast corner of Fourth and Morello Street as requested by Luis Muro. Mr. Escobar, are you there?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is a, uh, this is my application for a rezoning. By Mr. One. Two.
Maybe I can go ahead and do that, Mayor Commissioners. The applicant is proposing to rezonate this property into single-family residence district in order to build a single-family home. Uh, there is water and sewer service available with the City of San Juan. The property owner will be required to subdivide the property in order to undertake any improvements to the property. Uh, they pretty much step-milled a notice of the public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission to nine property owners within the 200-foot radius and received no comments in favor or against the request.
So I see that it was a 7-0 unanimous, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this time, I'm gonna go and open this up at 6:05 PM. Is there anyone here or for or against? Anybody on the line for or against? Any questions from the members of the commission in regards to this matter? If not, I'll go ahead and close this at 6:05 PM. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
The next item is for the public hearing for rezoning request from a neighborhood commercial district to single-family residence of a .50 acre tract land out of lot nine, block 35, Alamo Land and Shure Companies subdivision located southeast corner of Fourth and Morello Street as requested by Margarita Aguirre. Again, the applicant is proposing to rezonate the property into single-family residence district to be inconsistent with the land use. There is an existing house that was built in 1985 when the property was located outside the city limits of San Juan. The step-milled notice to the public hearing before the P&amp;Z Commission to 14 property owners within the 200-foot radius and received no comments in favor or against the request.
Time, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up at 6:06 PM. 6:06 PM. Is there anyone here for or against? Anyone on the line for or against? Any questions from the members of the commission?
If I may, Mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, Mr. Arjona, on this one, the access to those two properties is gonna be off of Morelos?
The access will be off of Morelos, uh, I think so, sir. Yes.
Morelos Street and they can go either out Morelos or...
And Fourth?
Yes, there's a Fourth Street that puts to it.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Arjona or Mr. Escobar? If not, I'll go ahead and close this at 6:07 PM. Is there a motion approved?
Approve.
Is there a second? I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item under ordinance is, there's an ordinance, consideration approval of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of San Juan Texas Combination Tax and Limited Pledge Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2020 and other matters related and incident thereto. Uh, do we have Mr. Chris Vella on the line?
Yes.
Mr. Vella, uh, this is in the ordinance. You wanna jump in into that one?
Yes, sir, Mr. Arjona. Um, we're prepared to make a, a, an abbreviated presentation for slides two, three, five, six, and seven.
Yes, sir. And before you continue on that, if I may, I apologize for this, but before you, we have a presentation right in front of you that I, that I placed. The one that was placed on the, on the agenda, obviously, the figures are not there because we just got the figures this, this morning. And this is because of the, uh, the work that they do, and it was past Friday. So, uh, this is the updated, uh, figures. Go ahead, Mr. Vella.
What page did you say?
They're all there. He's gonna go through, uh, more than likely started to. Go ahead, Mr. Vella.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the City Commission. Um, we had a very successful sale, a competitive sale this morning. We took bids at 10:00 AM. And I'd like to, um, start out by looking at slide number, number two, which starts with the transaction summary. The City of San Juan financed a portion of a municipal complex and parks improvements with the issuance of combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, series 220. The certificates funded a total of $5 million in projects. $4.7 million to finance the municipal complex, supported by the city, utility department, EDC, 4B Corporation, and sanitation department. $300,000 to finance park improvements, supported by the city only. The municipal complex will be utilized by various departments within the city, and each department will partially support the financing as follows. City administration, INS, debt service taxes, utility department, utility system net revenues, EDC, 4B Corporation, 4B sales tax, and sanitation department sanitation system net revenues. Okay, moving on to slide three. The new capacity obtained through growth in taxable assessed valuation in tax year 220, no tax rate impact. Organic growth and adequate rates and charges for the utility fund, no utility rate impact. Organic growth with adequate rates and charges for the sanitation fund, no sanitation rate impact. Existing 4B sales tax revenues as reported by the Texas Controller of Public Accounts as of August 2020. The certificate certificates have been issued as bank qualified for lower interest rates, fixed interest rates. City's total tax exempt bid issuance of less than $1,000,000 for calendar year 2020. Certificates are rated by Standard and Poor's. The city's GO debt rating has been affirmed by Standard and Poor's at A with a stable outlook. The certificates were sold through an open market competitive sale. Slide five is a summary of the credit rating of the A stable outlook. And you can review the bullet points there that are, that are stated for each one of the budgetary items that, that were listed. On slide six, we have a list of the bidders. Starting with the Baker Group, which was the lowest, the lowest interest cost of a 1.636889%. Then BOK Financial Securities was a cover with a 1.647890. And Raymond James and Associates, 1.713564. And lastly, Robert W. Beard and Company, 1.74990. Slide seven. A comparison of projected on the present, on the final plan of finance compared to, to the actual, the all-in true interest cost. We had presented a 221. And the actual was a 182. The variance was 39 basis points of 1%. Total debt service, $6,261,714 versus the actual of $6,017,158. Or a difference of $244,556 less. The average annual debt service, $12,228 annually, and then the project fund, $5 million. If there's any que, the rest are appendices to the cash flows for each one of the funds. If there's any questions, we can certainly entertain them at this time. One last thing. I, I believe we also have Mr. Arnold Cantú on the line, bond attorney, if you have any questions from a legal standpoint.
So I guess, Mr. Vella, just for the record, um, so you're telling me there won't be no tax rate impact, no utility rates impact, or no sanitation rate impact as well, right?
That is correct, Mayor.
There won't be no increase in any form or any way of any taxes?
That is correct.
That's the only question I have for you. Other than that, overall, you know, your opinion, pretty much everything went pretty smooth and great for the city. Am I correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vella. Any questions for Mr. Vella?
No, no questions, Mayor. Mr. Vella, thank you very much. Just wanted to applaud your, your services and stuff like that. It seems that we're doing our due diligence and making sure that we have everything proper and checked and, and you know, as our credit, credit ratings getting moved forward or and, and we're improving and stuff. It's, it's genuine and it's nice to understand that, that we're able to do this for the community or, or moving forward and without any tax rates in, in increase at all the phases that the mayor just stated right now. So I just want to applaud your work, sir. So thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, uh, yes, he's most definitely correct. The, the, the work that Mr. Vella did was outstanding. I mean, it was very aggressively taken into the, into the sense of, uh, you know, the, the interest rate and helping us out through the, through the rating. Uh, Leroy Finance, myself, we were in that call, and it was, it was a very good call. I think, uh, the, uh, I mean, it's there on the slide number. Let me just go back on the slide so you can see it. We're very proud of the fact that it says that it's a, the rating reflects what we, what they consider San Juan's, which is adequate management, uh, adequate budgetary performance, strong budgetary flexibility, and also very strong liquidity and strong institutional framework. So that speaks very highly of not only us, but the leader, the leadership that you guys have given us. So thank you, Mr. Vella. Thank you, Steph, and thank you, Mayor Commissioners, for allowing us to do this kind of work. And this is, speaks greatly because, I mean, now we're gonna have a, a, start building on the new city of Juan. As a matter of fact, we did the kickoff meeting this morning, and here pretty soon, we're gonna be doing the groundbreaking. So that, that was, it's very pleasing to say that here in the near future, there's gonna be a groundbreaking for the new city of Juan.
Great news.
Yes, sir.
With that being said, is there a motion approved? Is there a second?
Second.
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 All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Aye. Aye.
I'm sorry?
Why? I apologize for the record. You opposed?
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't. Go ahead.
Next item, we have, um, consideration approval of an ordinance, amending the ordinance number 2002-012 and chapter traffic and vehicles article 12.04 trucks and commercial vehicles, section 12.04.002, truck routes designated of the City of San Juan's Code of Ordinances to amend the routes for trucks and commercial vehicles. Before I continue, Mayor, uh, I would just wanna say that, thank you, Mr. Arnold Cantú for being there on the line, and also, Mr. Chris Vella. Really appreciate that. So in front of you, so we have the proposed ordinance, which is to amend the number 2002-012 and designated routes for the trucks, and you have it before you on page 107, uh, where we have the city designate the following streets as a truck route. Going back and reviewing the, the one that are proposed, I'd like to make a couple of changes. I'd like to, uh, take out the Alameda Street from Veterans Boulevard to Obleh Street as, as, as being proposed only because of the fact that the, uh, we're under the impression that the docking station was on the, on the Alameda side, but it's through Veterans. So there's no need to create that as a truck route. So it'll continue being as Veterans a truck route for the, uh, you know, the delivery trucks from HEB. So that's the reason I wanna take that out. And the other ones, Cesar Chavez from Decker Road to Sioux Road, FM 495 from Veterans, uh, to Cesar Chavez, FM Nebraska, 1426 Nebraska Avenue from Business 83 to Owaso. That's only on the north from Business 83. And, uh, standard, that, that's a little question there. The Standard Avenue from Business 83 to H Street, the only reason we kept it there is because of the Dollar General that is there. So we're gonna allow trucks to go in there from Business 83 to H and going back only, just right only because of the general store that is there. Okay? And, uh, and then we have Stewart Road from south of city limits to Interstate Highway number two, and then Business 83 from Veterans Boulevard to Cesar Chavez Road. The other one that we have that is not on the ordinance that I'd like to add, that we just added at the last minute, is considered for Decker Road all the way from Veterans to Stewart Road because it's not on the ordinance, even though it is a, a, assumed to be a truck route. It is not on our city, uh, ordinance. So we can add those two. It's Decker from, from Veterans to Stewart. Right.
Are just the truck routes?
Yes, sir. Just the truck routes.
So anything outside of this boundary, they're violating the ordinance. Am I correct?
Yes.
So by violating the ordinance, the PD officers, patrolmen have every right to pull over the trucks.
Inside them, yes.
Inside them.
Right.
But, you know, I just wanna make that clear.
Yes. And starting tomorrow, we have the signs already, the no-trucks, that we're gonna be placing all over the different streets.
Good, good. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Arjona?
If I may.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, Mr. Arjona, I, I know we still have Stewart Road from, uh, south of the city to IH2. That's been the biggest concern from the residents in that area. So there was no way to remove it?
There's, there's not a whole lot we can do on that one because it, it is a, a Tech Dot road. So it's, it's out of our control on that one.
So we're still in, in communications with them to see if maybe...
The only thing we were able to do was reduce the speed as we brought it sometime, sometime back from, uh, and I forget what it was, uh, 55 to 45, something like that, on the speed limit. We were able to reduce that. Uh, but as far as changing it, doing away with the truck route is really out of our hands. Well, Cesar Chavez is not a truck route, but if that was to be the case, and it can always be considered later.
Wrong enough.
You're gonna start hitting all the businesses also. It's up to consider.
Right. And, and just keep in mind that Cesar Chavez doesn't go all the way to Decker Road. It stops at, and I forget what the street is. Moore Road, I think, if I'm not mistaken, that's where it stops. So we'll need to reroute some of the trucks going, if that was to be the case, Stewart Road all the way to, to, uh, what is it, uh, Moore? Come back to Cesar Chavez and then go up. Right.
And I know, based on, uh, we were getting somewhere in your, your communications with Tech Dot before this whole pandemic started and stuff like that. Unfortunately, it put a setback to every, every, every entity in, you know, every bureaucracy that's out there. But, but, but maybe after this is done, then we can entertain some of those a little bit closer.
And the other thing that we're doing there is increasing the visibility of the police officers or police units to be there, especially during the school hours.
Yeah. Well, I'm glad that, that we took a step already as far as the, the, the speed limit and making sure that, I just want, you know, make sure that the public knows that we are doing whatever we can as, as, you know, city officials mentioned it right now, that, that, you know, that that is a concern because of the schools' speed limit. It is gotten better slowly, but, but, uh, whatever we can do, whenever this stuff, we'll entertain that with Tech Dot.
Those definitely.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mentioned, what, what was the, the reduced speed there? Was it 10, 10?
I think it was 10 miles, but I, I can, I really don't know. I really don't remember that. I know it was brought over to the, to this meeting. Uh, Mr. Escobar, you have an idea on that as far as the reduced speed or Mr. Rodriguez, Chief? Okay. I guess, um, I, I can always bring it back if you like at the next meeting as a presentation as to what the, uh, reduced speed was on Stewart Road.
Yeah, I guess also if you can just touch base with maybe B or someone from Tech Dot and see how we can work that, that, uh, Stewart Road and see what's the best alternative to, um, reroute the, the, the traffic there. I understand that the biggest concern is that a lot, a lot of our streets, whether you turn east or west, they're just about an inch and a half of, of overlay.
And, and that's what I was gonna say, that one of the biggest concerns that we did it as far as this approach of designating some of these routes as truck routes is because some of the streets that we have within city limits, you just said, Mayor, it's a one and a half to one and a quarter when it, when it's actually on. And the truck routes usually requires at least four inches to three and a half, uh,
Of concrete.
Uh, of the asphalt. So, so, uh, what are things is that if we allow them to use Cesar Chavez, which is not gonna be a truck, rather than it's gonna be a messed up street within less than a year.
Year.
Right. So if... Well, that's gonna be, is not really necessarily a Tech Dot, that's a MPO type of a project. So they, they're gonna do whatever is on the specs already. Uh, if we spec it out with a heavier gauge of asphalt, then it's gonna be a cost to the city.
Of course.
Right.
So the, I mean, the understanding is that if that was an option to take, that there would be, there would be an increase.
We can always entertain that.
It's gonna cost some money to...
And we can, we can entertain that and speak to the precinct too and see what options that they can also give us, Mayor. Not only necessarily the Tech Dot, but also...
Put that on the next, uh, just kind of, just for a discussion.
Sure, we can do that.
Just to see what they say. Okay. With that being said, uh, is there a motion approved? Is there a second? Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those...
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item, preliminary and final pledge approval of the Uresti subdivision being a 4.68 tract land out of lot 16, block eight, Junk Klausens subdivision located approximately 750 feet south of Eldora Road along the west side of Raúl Longoria Road is requested by Mas Engineering LLC. Uh, on this one, Mayor, uh, the developer is proposing to subdivide those 4.68 acres tracking to one commercial lot for retail and storage warehousing units. The property is located along Raúl Longoria Road and Eldora Road just south of the storage depot. Water and sewer service are available. The water service will be provided by North Alamo Water Supply Corporation and the sewer by the City of San Juan. It is noted that the city approved the rezoning of this property into commercial district in June 23rd, 2020.
7-0 unanimous? Any questions for, uh, Mr. Arjona? If not, is there a motion approved? Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
The next item is preliminary and final pledge approval of the re-pledge of lots three and four of the Texas National Subdivision being a 3.15 acre tract located the northeast corner of Veterans Boulevard and Frontis Road is requested by Milton and Hunt Incorporated. The developer proposing to replaid lots three and four of the Texas National Subdivision that was recorded in March of 2018. He's proposing to increase the, uh, approximately 50-feet in width of lot four, the existing zoning expressway corridor district. Water services are provided by the City of San Juan. Fire hydrants are already installed as per the San Juan Fire Department. This is where the, uh, car wash is going to be situated. Uh, it was just that, that they needed to increase the, the size of the, the property to accommodate the, uh, the, the blue wave car wash.
So you're saying, the car wash you're talking about, blue wave?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. And they're almost ready for the Grand American as well on that one.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Arjona? If not, is there a motion approved? Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
The next item, consider the approval of budget amendment in the amount of $72,950 out of miscellaneous grant fund balance to the Police Department grant budget. Uh, in September 19, the City Commission approved the miscellaneous grant budget for the San Juan Police Department miscellaneous grant funds for the year beginning October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2020. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, funding opportunities were made available, and the San Juan Police Department was recently notified it was awarded $72,950 for personal protection equipment. So all we're doing is doing a budget amendment. They will receive that, put it back in their account.
Questions for Mr. Arjona? Not, is there a motion approved?
Approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item, consider authorizing city manager to declare various items as salvage and surplus property. Uh, as per Texas Local Government Code 252, salvage property means personal property other than items routinely discarded as waste because of the use, time, accident, or any other cause is so worn, damaged, or obsolete, it has no value for the purpose of which it was originally intended. Surplus property means property is not salvage property or items routinely discarded as waste, if not currently needed or required by the city and possess some usefulness for the purposes for which it was intended. The inventory is there, however, I'll ask the commission, Mayor, that, uh, you allow us to go over and look and see if there's anything that we can actually pull out and use for our staff, different departments, and then we can consider the, the rest of this item as surplus.
Any questions at this time? If not, is there a motion approved?
Approve.
Approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item, discussion and possible election to approve a budget amendment out of the retained earnings stormwater fund for repairs on Citrus Street from, from I Road to Alameda for the amount of $16,500 and to authorize city manager to execute all related documents and budget amendments needed. As you may recall, there are some pictures in there that the, the company, they, they came over and did a cleaning out of the, uh, of the, the whole drainage. And if you may recall, there was a, it was a meeting sometime back, back then, interim, uh, what do you call it, acting director for, for sanitation gave us a proposal about the, the, the company doing a turnkey about cleaning, derouting, and sealing. So we're taking it in different, uh, steps. Uh, the next step is to actually, uh, do the cleaning, uh, which is, they're estimating about $16,500. This is pretty much in line with what we had initially proposed. And as a matter of fact, this is gonna be a lot cheaper than what we initially proposed. Remember, there was about, what was it, Mr. Roel Garza? Was it over $100,000 or was it $85,000? And we've done it in stages. So we're a little bit under that, that proposal. You can see, you can see what the roots are, what the problem is in Citrus. These guys are gonna come over and put some sort of a chemical that'll disintegrate the, the roots. And then, uh, what, what we wanna do is purchase the, the, the attachment and adapter to the, uh, to the vector truck that we just purchased, which is called a derouter. And it's gonna go in there and get rid of all the roots. But this is the reason why we have a lot of, a lot of flood in, in that area. Because of those pigs. Because of those pigs.
May I make?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Arjona? So the, the, the item is to transfer sixteen five?
Yes, sir, sixteen thousand, five hundred.
And what is the total cost of the project itself, do you know?
So far, I don't, I don't have a, a number on that, Mr. Garza, do you have a estimate already? So far, what we paid?
Yes, sir, right now, we're a little bit under fifty-five thousand. Be under seventy thousand, way below the initial amount that was proposed in January.
What's that initial amount?
That initial amount, I believe was a little bit over a hundred, over a hundred thousand.
Nice.
And with this, with this, if we approve this, this request, it says in that account, we're going to have sixty-seven thousand, so that's going to be enough to cover?
So far, as far as what, what is needed, yes, sir.
So this will eliminate the problem there at Citrus?
That is correct. We're going to go in there and they're going to do the repairs and get rid of all these roots that are there. And that'll alleviate the backlog, you know, that the water not going through.
Righty, with that being said, is there a motion approved?
No move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item, consideration approval to rescind the action taken in August eleventh, twenty twenty regarding the proposed tax rate of point six nine nine three for the City of San Juan for fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. The assignment was brought over at the last meeting. However, there was a glitch on the county's side. And I, I've attached the, that email that was sent to us. So what they did was, instead of giving us the proposed rate, they gave us the one that was there before. So the proposed rate, the voted approval tax rate was a little bit less than what we actually had. So it's at a point six nine two six, so we could do a couple of things. We can leave it as, as is because accordingly to the state is that this area declares a disaster area. So they're, they're allowing an eight percent increase that does not go over. So if you look at the point six nine two six plus an eight percent increase, it's within, it's within the, the limits of the point six nine nine three, doesn't go over for voter approval. However, we're recommending that we, we go with a voter approval rate, which is at point six nine two six instead of the point six six nine nine three. It's a savings or there's a difference of seventy-three thousand dollars as far as the whole property sales tax, I mean, value of the laura at the end of the, at the end of the fiscal year.
That is, that is your recommend?
We need a motion to rescind the action that was taken.
The last meeting.
The last meeting.
That's correct.
Mention, what was the savings you mentioned?
About seventy-three thousand.
Seventy-three.
So at this time, is there a motion to rescind this particular item? Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, this motion has been rescinded.
The next item discussing, consider now the proposed tax rate for the City of San Juan for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and setting a public hearing. And according with the property tax law, the proposed tax rate of point six nine two six will exceed the effective tax rate of point six five three four or rollback tax rate of point six nine two six. A record vote must be taken and also scheduled one public hearing. The one public hearings will be scheduled on Tuesday, September the eighth, twenty twenty, at six PM as well as adoption of the tax rate. The public hearing will take a special, that will take place at the City of San Juan Memorial Library multipurpose room located ten ten South Standard. So having said that, the recommendation is to consider the proposed tax rate for the City of San Juan for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, setting a public hearing and also adopting of the tax rate.
And the tax rate would be at six nine, uh, point six nine two six.
That being said, is there a motion approved?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
The next item of the consent agenda, we have a couple of items, A and B, tax allocation report and also the budget expenditure report. You can take any items out if you'd like to discuss further.
Time, is there anything under consent agenda to modify or amend under consent agenda? If not, is there a motion approved? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. This meeting has been adjourned at six thirty-six PM.